Okay, good evening. This is the plan board meeting of Tuesday, July 1. We have a quorum, so is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our first item this evening is, we have some resolutions. So our first one is for the Schultz. 132 Old Lawrence Road. This is an application for a site development plan. Approved to convert an existing garage attic into an accessory apartment. So we heard this last time around, last time we met. We did it as really as a one and done. And we instructed staff to bring together a resolution. And here we have it before us. So we got that one little minor change right there. It was very, very minor. In fact, that was the word, minor. Change. And does anyone else have any questions or issues?
I would like to, if possible, could we add to the resolution? This was the, if I recall, this was the unit where we were swapping bedrooms.
Yes. Going from five to four in the house.
From five to four and the shipping went over to the garage. My concern was two families living in there, the system be able to handle it. I understand that the county has their rules and we cannot go against the county. However, can we make as part of the resolution, the homeowner going forward every two years gets the system pumped?
Well, I think we have something in.
We have something in the code, but that's not always strictly adhered to. Can we make this homeowner do it and then just sort of copy the receipt into the town every two years to ensure it's?
Um, Brad, the New York City watershed can be, um, properties are required according to New York State to maintain their subject system once every five years and submit documentation to the town.
This is, oh, this is watershed?
And the town is applying that regulation townwide.
Doesn't the town, doesn't?
You also have that requirement in the Indian Brook watershed.
Doesn't the town now request every two to three years you have your system?
No, it's five years.
It's five years, okay.
Any conscientious homeowner knows to do it within three.
Can we reduce the five to a lower number?
I don't know that we would have any means of tracking that. We are in the process of developing means to track the state requirement.
Okay, fair enough.
I would, I would hate to add another, another timeframe to that. I think once we get established in accordance with what the state wants us to do, I think we can then start looking to reduce it.
Gotcha. Okay, now let's move on.
Okay. Any other questions, Stuart?
No, no.
Thanks. Uh, Jeff, any questions? Jeff Seigler, no, Jeff Seigler is here.
Okay.
He's here.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
No. Okay, great. Okay. Is there a motion then to adopt the resolution with that one minor, minor adjustment?
Yeah, motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
So four, four and however you classify the votes are not here.
Got it.
We'll classify them that way. Okay. Our next item is the Meredith, 14 Wolf's Hill Road. This is an application for approving, reletting subdivision plan approval for the merger of two tax lots into one. This is the one that we heard last time around. Also, it was really at the, sort of at the direction of the ZBA to make this comply with their, their variances. So any questions or issues on the language enclosed here or part of this?
No.
Jeff, any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, very good. So everyone else is good with it? So is there a motion then to adopt the resolution for the Meredith application? Motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, four zero carried. Next item is a public hearing. This is for the Newcastle Fire District, number one. This is 491 King Street. This is an application for a site development plan amended for a modification of the previously approved site planning. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great, thank you. Let's stop for a moment. We're just getting set up here.
Yep.
So we have some supplemental items that were, I think, attached to the building, right? And there's some other ones that you, you want to add.
And some existing to remain.
Yes, sir.
I keep getting a warning on my screen that I'm not using the audio, so. Oh, it's not showing up here because I'm logged into the, so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't. So that's. Good evening, Chairman Kirkwood, members of the board. My name is Joe Mottifari with JMC. I'm senior project manager for this project. It's been a while since we've seen you before. I'm here tonight with. Here tonight with Lynn Wine, the project attorney, and then Dwight Smith and Ed Frank, commissioners with the Board of Fire Commissioners. We are here tonight for an amended site plan approval to modify the site lighting for the project. I'm sure you've seen that the project is under construction. I know that there is some new members here since last time we were here or even since this project. Quick history of the project. We received our initial approval in October of 2016. Then a filling, grading, and demo permit in April of 2018. Then we were back in front of you for our first site plan amendment in July of 2023 so that we could put the New York State DOT permit at the point of certificate of occupancy because we were still working through some of the issues with them and wanted to get started on construction, which the board granted. And then our second amendment to the approval was just last September where we had a temporary trailer approved on the parking lot that the district owns. And then building permit was issued in October of 2024. Quick summary of the amendments. We're requesting light fixtures that were previously proposed on the building at the time of the previous proposal on the existing building were removed from the project due to budgetary issues and we were going to leave the existing lights to remain in place. Since then, I'll get into some detail on some existing, some lights that were installed during construction on the existing building. So we're looking to keep those lights in place. And then we had incorporated two additional lights over truck bays at the, of the proposed expansion on King Street. And we're proposing an alternate to the pole-mounted lights that was previously approved. This little warning box wants me to. All right. So just another, as related to the project history, we purchased the previously adjacent animal hospital, merged the lots, and did the project expansion. The project expansion was based on studies that were done in 2013 and 2014 that evaluated current and future needs of the firehouse and the district to operate and serve the community, which included addition of larger trucks, more state-of-the-art equipment, providing safe training space for the firefighters, and consolidation of the equipment and operations on other parcels that they, that the fire district owns. Sorry, this little box keeps popping up on my screen that I'm not in the audio when you. Do not want to. Let me see if I can fix this. Let me see if I can turn off the audio somehow. Does not want to let me continue.
You can bypass it, you're okay.
So. There we go. So just as a context, this is the previously existing firehouse that exists there today. And these are the two parcels that were purchased, the animal hospital and their parking lot. And then the district also owns the parking lot on the opposite side of the street. And that's an existing conditions map. And then the layout plan for the project. So we have a driveway that comes in off of Bedford Road and then is one way out to Memorial Drive. And then circulation for the firehouse was intended to be and will be one-way circulation for the fire trucks where they will come in through Memorial Drive and exit via King Street. Just to give you a sense of, you know, what the overall project is. Under pre-existing conditions, the, this driveway here that currently exists is one way or was one way and wraps around the existing building and exited onto King Street. Currently, under construction, there is, the firefighters are using this parking area for parking so that the firehouse can remain in operation during construction. So that'll. That will come into play in the discussions later as we get into the proposed changes. So this is the approved lighting plan that's in front of you. We had the flex-style lighting fixtures on all the pole-mounted fixtures in the site. And we had these little square boxes around the building that were to replace and/or supplement the existing lighting on the building that I mentioned earlier was, was removed as part of the project due to budgetary concerns. And we had a single fixture over the middle truck bay. So there's three truck bays on the building. We had a single fixture over the existing truck bay. At the time of the approval, there was concern about light spillage over the property line because we were, we were adjacent to a residential zone, which is, there's a residential use right here and a residential zone that kind of follows that property line and comes around this way like this. So the result of this previously approved plan was no light spillage off the property line. And these are the cut sheets that were part of your package for the approved plan. So this was the flex-style pole-mounted light fixture and the wall-mounted light fixture was this one here. Now, the proposed lighting plan, we are proposing to basically maintain the location of the pole-mounted lights but switch it to a more utilitarian shoebox-style fixture. Part of, there's two reasons for that. One is budgetary. The flex-style fixtures that were approved, to put all of those in versus these is a difference of about $20,000. And secondly, as we were looking at this, we found that this project was approved 2016. The flex-style fixtures in the format that they were approved with the, the lighting mechanisms in the fixture is no longer available. So they can no longer provide a fixture that allows for cutoff at the property line in the previous locations. Whereas this proposed pole-mounted fixture will do that. And then there was, again, one light fixture over this truck bay. The center truck bay, we're proposing three. We were able to find a different light fixture that we can put light over each truck bay for safety purposes for the firefighters and, and maintenance of trucks and whatever they're doing for the operation, but will still result in no spillage over the property line for the, in this area along King Street or along our neighbor's property here. And then, again, the existing lights to remain on the existing build. So.
And that's more than two, you're just tagging two, right?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes. So, so as I said before, during construction.
Yeah, I, I get.
No, the, I'm getting to the point where there's more lights there. So the original intent was to just leave existing as they were and, and come back to you and, and explain that because they were existing, doing what they were doing. And while the firefighters were using this parking lot in the back as a temporary situation where it's, it's kind of a big wide turnaround area. They're parking where they can to go out and do what they have to do to fight fires or address emergencies or whatever it may be. They had expressed concern about the lack of lighting back there to the Board of Fire Commissioners. So the Board of Fire Commissioners utilized money in their maintenance budget to install five lights on the back of the building. So there's one here, one here, and two here. I guess it's four lights, I'm sorry. So there's four lights here. So we're proposing as part of this application now to keep those lights in place.
Do those lights match the existing ones?
No, they do not.
Are they close?
No.
Okay.
So now there's two sets of lights on the, two sets of existing fixtures.
Yeah, the, the existing fixtures are a lot of like the old-school spotlights or, or just, you know, lights over the doors.
Yeah, you have pictures of them in the package.
I do, yes, and I have them in the presentation as well. So, so this slide shows that with the proposed lighting or lighting as proposed today, we have some minimal spillage shown in your package at Memorial Drive, right here at this driveway, which we can fix and are working on, on adjusting. That simply take, requires taking this one light fixture and sliding it down the page just the slightest bitch, bit to get, to get that out of play. And then there is some light spillage over the, some minimal light spillage over the car wash property and the utility property here. There's some transformers on the property there. And that is basically a direct result of the fixtures that were installed on the building.
So the spillage is coming from, from those lights on the building?
Yes, that's correct.
Can they be adjusted? Hoods or otherwise to, you know, fix that?
Not really, not really, no. Because, because of the type of fixture they are. And you'll see when, when we get to the.
And to clarify or to confirm, this will still be used for parking when you're finished? Because that's one of the parking areas that.
That's correct.
Yeah, you're saying that permanently.
Yes, that, that is part of the permanent part.
Sign your.
Yes.
And the two parcels to the north are a commercial zone district, right? It's not residential.
Commercial zoned and commercial use. In fact, one is a utility, you know, transformer, which will probably remain that for.
For a long time.
A long, long time. And my guess is they would appreciate some light on there if they're out there in the dark trying to fix something. But. So that, but we are, this, this plan does maintain no light spillage on our, our neighbor's property, on the residential property or along King Street or along Bedford Road.
I think in addition along the residential area, we also have some built into the approved plan, some vegetative buffering as well.
That's correct.
Which would even help that situation even more so. It doesn't look like we have room up here. I don't recall that we had any vegetative buffering up there of the, those lights.
No, there, there's a retaining wall that's right at the property line and, you know, and a fence there, so.
And the apron where you're putting the three lights across the street is your parking lot, isn't it? Is that your parking lot right?
Down here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's our park, that, yes.
So those three lights are impacting your lot the most?
They're, they're really not impacting anyone.
If they were?
If they were, yes. I mean, according to this analysis, there is no light spillage on the street. We didn't go out and do a lighting analysis on the street. But if you stand out there with the lights from the gas station and everything else that's going on there, it's pretty bright at night on that street anyway.
Right.
You know, at one point we were going to consider doing that, but it didn't really make, seem necessary because we are having the cutoff at the property line. I, I will tell you that, you know, this analysis, there, there are some existing lights on the building that are some old-school spotlights or the old-school, you know, lights over at doors or above doors that are not included in this analysis because they're just too old to even try to figure out how to do that.
Are they sodium high light or that old or that bad?
I, I, they're just standard, like screw-in spotlight bulbs.
Like floodlights.
I have some photos of them.
Yeah, you'll see the shot.
And even just, and even just standard light bulbs in a, in a kind of a.
You buy them, yeah, you could buy CVS probably.
Yes, yes. So. So these are the, the existing lights on the existing building. This is slide one of that. So the blue, the blue circles here show that, so there was five. One, two, three, four, five fixtures that were installed by the fire district, you know, after construction started. And then the red lights or the red circles that you can see here at the door and at the door. And then this is on the side of the building, not facing the parking lot, facing, what is that, Bedford Road?
120, 117, right?
Yeah, 117. So. And then these are the ones on the front of the building, which are basically just simple spotlights over the truck bay doors. And some of them are even just like, like this one is just the red light that's required by something related to the firehouse to say that, you know, this is a firehouse, safe zone, whatever it really means, I'm not really sure, but, you know. And then these are the light fixtures that are either installed or proposed to be installed. So this fixture here is the one that was installed by the fire district. So you can see that it is a, you know, it is, it doesn't really have a, a shield on it. And, you know, I guess one could be made aftermarket, but I don't know what it would do or how to even analyze how it would do that. It's not something that would be made available, you know, by the company that.
Do, do you know what lamp is in that? The, the temperature of the lamp in there? Is it white or yellow?
I believe it's white. It's, it's 3,000 K. There, there, there are, there is a switch in there.
It's 2,700 for, I think everything else on the job is 27.
It, it was 3,000, I think.
3,000 was approved?
I think so, yeah, because it was.
Let, let's check that.
Yeah.
If we, we.
It's usually 27.
Typically 27 is the number we've been going for.
2,700, yeah.
Yeah, so check that, please.
I, I was pretty sure we were at three, 3,000 for everything. I know that I was told that there's a switch inside that fixture, that you can go anywhere from three to five. I told them, get up there and turn it down to three.
Down to three, okay. Yeah, and it may have been approved to three, we may have gone 2,700 after you guys. Maybe you guys beat us up and we decided no more after that.
Okay.
Who knows?
We used to use candles when you guys were approved.
Yeah.
Well, the original firehouse.
No, that's this one too. It just seems like it.
Yeah, it's been a long time. So, so this is just, there, there's one or two that are showing on the plan that are underneath a canopy at a door, just your standard hi-hat. And then this one here is the same light fixture that is shown above the doors across the site. This is the fixture that we're proposing above the three truck bay doors at, on the frontage where we don't have the cutoff.
This, this sconce, the one in the middle one?
I'm sorry?
Which one, the, the one that's a wall sconce?
They're, 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 yeah.
That one, okay. The black one or the white one?
I don't, I don't know if I, I, I'm guessing it's the black one, but it's the wall sconce here.
Yeah, yeah, because the others look like they just hang from the ceiling.
Or the, the white or the black. Yeah, it's.
Yeah, those, yeah, the wall sconce.
Okay. And then this is the more utilitarian shoebox-style fixture to replace the, the flex-style fixture. So in summary again, we're here to request amended site plan approval for the lighting as presented and, and submitted. This is for record for some of the new people. This is an image of the old firehouse, the previous animal hospital. We can transition to what is currently under construction now, just for reference. And then any questions anybody has, I'm happy to answer.
Very good, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sabrina, you had some questions or comments?
Um, my only comment was, you know, I gave a hand with the history. I guess previously there were 20 lights that were approved as part of the, the site plan approval for the site. And now there are 26 fixtures. The, as was discussed, the, the, the only issue that I see with the new lights is the light spillage, particularly onto the car wash property. You know, we do have a code that says there should be no light spillage onto neighboring properties. You know, so my question, Joe, is, you know, did you try locating the poles on the other side of the driveway?
So we did not, but those lights do not spill onto the property. We, we, we provided in the package, which I didn't might, did not make part of the presentation, but we provided in the package where we took the lights off the plan, the light poles in that area out of the plan, and we still had spillage from the lights mounted on the building.
Yeah, so, so the, you know, again, it's really up to the planning board because this would be an exception. We've, you guys have never approved a project that had light spillage off-site.
And Joe, on that, I, I think these, these various circles indicate the source of the, the light in the, in the main area on this plan. So it seems to me that, in looking at it, that the lighting on the building is not the cause of the spillage. Based on these, these concentric circles and Venn circles here, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but it seems to me maybe that's the main part of the lighting that, that shows on this plan. So I guess, I don't know what that really means because it looks like it's drawn to show that it's not really the lights on the building that are causing the spillage. And to Sabrina's point, it, it appears that it might be from the pole lights. Let me see if I can. This is the, the later one. This is the 529 one from WLS Lighting. Yep.
It does look like it's coming from those, those five. If you start following the photometric a little bit further, the blue transition just above the word. This is basketball net. It goes from 1.0 to 0.9. So we have that 1.0 coming from one of those light fixtures. 529, there's a, right? Above the word basketball net, there's a 1.1 and a 1.0.
Yep.
That's here to be coming from those fixtures.
We just gotta share again because they have the plan up. So it's.
Were those fixtures approved?
Well, when they were approved, whenever they were approved and wherever they were located, back when they were approved, there was no spillage. So, so we have a change here with, you know, some minor spillage. But to Sabrina's point, we've been very, very careful with spillage over the years. You know, it's one thing to say it's a car wash right now, but that location could be, you know, a residential building at some future point.
Good evening, everyone. Lynn Wine, I just wanted to clarify what the light spillage is in the code. I see in section 60-420D that the only reference to light spillage is with respect to residential properties. To the extent reasonably practicable, all exterior lighting used for non-residential purposes, including the lighting of signs, shall be directed away from adjoining residential properties and streets. I may have missed it, Sabrina, what, what part of the code it was in, that there shall be no light spillage, but I didn't, I couldn't find anything. I couldn't find anything in the code that specifically, uh, stated that.
Yeah, I think the practice has been in the past, um, you know, regardless, regardless of whether it's residential or commercial, the planning board's practice has been to keep light spillage to the subject site and not having it spill over.
So, um, on the screen now is, there was a A five. Um, there, there were two plans that were provided to you from W L S. One was A four and the other was A five. So this A five, the lights that were, that were or are proposed along the property line here are not included in this analysis. So you can see here, there's, you know, the, the little box symbol here, those are just graphic symbols from a previous plan that was provided to W L S, but the one that's here, um, with the little arrow on it shows that they were included in the analysis. So this is just the lights on the building, those five fixtures, that are causing the light spillage onto the adjacent property here.
So I, I might be confused. Do those exist at this point or are they?
No, they do not. No, those don't.
Are they part of the plan or no?
Well, they, they, they are part of the proposed plan. The, the purpose of submitting this exhibit was just to show that the, uh, without lights here, if we just kept the lights on the building as they exist today, as the district had installed them, that is the cause of this light spillage.
But we see more spillage with these when they're put in, uh, uh, so the analysis does not include those?
So let's, let's see. So that was one, definitely one, point nine, point seven. Let's see if we can go back to.
But the five lights that are shown here, those aren't, are those not the ones that I'm looking at here? You put together a packet of photos. The first page has what appears to be those five lights that you pro- previously circled in either red or blue. Those, those I believe were installed recently and it's the upper left one of, on your sheet right here. Picture A.
Um, yes, tho- those sheets were installed recently.
Yeah, but the first one from going back to what it's asked for, picture A, right, you know, five fixtures A's on the building which were installed recently during the construction project. Were those previously on the plan that were approved or are those new fixtures that were added during construction?
New fixtures added during construction. But not, 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 not.
So, the photo picture plan that shows the one point one and the one that's above the word basketball net, the fixtures that are causing that have not been approved by us yet. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct.
Okay.
Alright, so it looks like there is some, it looks like you got one point one and one point O right here. Um, right above basketball net without the fixtures, the pole mounted fixtures on the property line. And that goes to one point three and one point one right there. So there is a slight increase with the pole mounted fixtures. Um, what I could propose is that we, let me see. Four, zero.
Joe, all these other, uh, numbers up here, there, there's, you know, there's some lighting up here. Is that from the transmitter, from condent itself? Do they have some sort of lighting up there or is that spilling out from the, the, the car wash, the later the car wash?
We have no analysis of the car wash or anything.
Okay, but there are numbers here, so I, I just wonder what the source is. I mean, maybe you're being penalized here and it's not even your source. You, it's not, it's not coming from the fire.
No, nothing offsite is included in this analysis. So there may or may not be lighting there that is considered. We didn't go out with a light meter or analyze anything.
So the point fours and the point threes and the point sixes in the utility site is from you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, looks like, yeah, let me see.
You. Zero threshold of point one. I mean, zero is, is there?
It's no spillage.
Zero, okay. And let's go here. It'd be nice to know though what the point one kinda looks like.
Just say, I mean, I could give you, one is considered like twilight.
Okay.
Point one is deep twilight and ten is, uh, like a very dark day. Just to get, to give you an, uh, what those numbers actually represent.
Okay.
So the point threes and the point fours are.
It's very dark. It's, it's still very dark, you know, it's, it's enough, the recommendation, I think, for like minimal lighting in a parking lot, I think it's point two.
Okay.
Um, there's, there's some, there's a lighting I E W something. It's the international something. Uh, recommendation, like I said, I think they recommend point two for, so it's, that's minimal, minimal lighting, just to be able to see where you're walking.
So it seems like if you look at these two plans side by side, the one in the black and white is the proposed plan that, uh, we submitted to you with all of the lights included. So you're looking at here, a one point three and a one point one right here where it says basketball net. If you come back over here, it's one point one and one point O. So there is a slight increase with the lights along the, um, along the property line, these two pole mounted lights. And it does provide some better light in the parking lot itself for the firefighters. Um.
And you might have a little bit higher levels up here as well, which might be from yours. It might not be. We, we really don't know the source of that. It seems.
Everything on here is only an analysis from our property. We did not, we, we did not go out and look at existing light levels anywhere around the property or at the property line to, to give a sense of what, you know, what may or may not be there today.
Well, um, we're always careful of precedent, but it seems to me that we could make an argument in this particular case that this is, uh, emergency services. These are guys coming in very quickly. Uh, they need a certain amount of lighting so they don't get hurt before they go out, you know, get to the fire. So it seems to me that we could, you know, distinguish this particular application from any other that we've seen. I mean, we have done this with banks and we've said no, no spillage, even though we have a state law that we, we work with, uh, you've probably, you've probably done some of those. So, um, it seems to me that if the board is so, um, um, inclined that we could find a way to, uh, distinguish this. There might still be some, we haven't listened, heard from Jeff, but there might be some other things that they can do with hoods, which is angling that will help. But it seems to me that, um, I don't think we should, uh, hold up the, the fire district over this very, very modest twilight lighting, uh, in view of, uh, the need. Uh, I, I, I recognize what it was before. There was, I think Jeff even had some questions about some lighting, whether no lighting in some of the front and, and thought perhaps that they oughta, uh, you know, uh, add something there, uh, just for safety.
I, I question the back, Joe. The five lights are up now during construction to add lighting to help out. When construction's over and those new poles are up, the five lights, maybe one light comes away and that helps eliminate the spillage. Food for thought, that might, uh, maybe you don't need all, you don't, maybe you don't need the five and the two poles, you only need four and the two poles. And that might eliminate some of the spillage.
It, it may. I don't know which one or whatever, but.
I'm sure analysis can give you an idea.
Yeah, yeah, oh, for sure, yes. I, I can't tell you right now tonight which one.
I did expect you to tell me exactly that.
But, uh, yeah, that'd be a way to make everybody happy.
Another thing that we could do is condition that, um, whenever bulbs are replaced, they're replaced with twenty seven hundred Kelvin. We could do that too.
Their, their L E D chairman.
Yep.
Yes.
Um, chairman, if I may, the, the, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor for sufficient lighting for the fire department for protecting anybody. You know, deal with this kind of stuff on a regular basis. My concern is, if you recall, I, I don't know if you're aware, C S T had some replacement lights.
C S T had some replacement lights.
And while there was no light spillage, some residential, uh, properties nearby complained and they, they went to the zoning board because of the temperature, but also of the, of the raw wattage that even though there may not be light spilling off the property to their property, they viewed it as a nuisance, especially during the winter when there was no foliage. So I think we just need to be careful on this, uh, on this topic. Um, as it relates to aftermarket, there's, I mean, they do, there is ability to get additional, um, to reduce the the lu- the lumens that are coming off with aftermarket even, um, there's coverings that can go on that basically, uh, would reduce the glare coming off. Um, so, I'm in favor of making sure that there's enough light there, but we also need to be careful of what's happening in other hearings in front of the town boards.
Good, okay. Thanks, Jeff. Um, Jeff, we haven't heard from you yet. Some comments?
Um, yeah, I su- I summarized, um, you know, they just deleted some and, and added new, um, overall, uh, light intensities, I think, were, um, decreased, but still ample lighting for the parking lots, which is what's important. The only thing I noted was that the walkway in front, there's no light for it and, but I would say if it's not used at night, that's up to the fire department if they need it or not, but just noting that there is, there's, there's no light on that front walkway.
That, that was consistent with the previous approval. It was kinda.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have, like I said, if they don't, if they, nobody's coming in that way, there's no point lighting it. And then, and that, that was really it. Um, you know, I, I just note that, I just wanna confirm that ninety percent of this light spillage or nearly all the light spillage comes from the five lights that were installed in between the original approval and what you're seeking now, this, this revised.
That's correct.
So it's, this is really something that, you know, it was, it was done, you know, by the fire department for, you know, be it temporary, but it sounds like they'd like to make it permanent.
Right.
But, y- you know, it's, it's probably not a, not a typical ask to put some, some vertical shields on to prevent the spillage going, if, you know, if the board feels it's that important. Because if you s- see the angle, there's, there's no angle on those lights. They spray straight out on the new ones.
Yeah, just go out, yeah, right, yes.
Um, you know, some sort of a, you know.
Even just cha- changing the angle could make a big difference.
I, I think those are static. I don't think you change anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, those cannot be changed.
It's like, the only thing you could do is either, we could weld a shroud on the front of it to, you know, to prevent the light from, from going past the property line. It, it's up to the, it's up to the board.
Well, possi- possibly prevent cuz it, because it would be an aftermarket thing, there would be no re- way to really analyze it. I mean, oh, on, on a, in a system.
In a system, no, no, no. You couldn't analyze it in system, but in, in, in practice.
In reality, in practice, you could stand out there and.
In practice, you could stand, you could stand on the, and say, where, where do I need to put the shroud down to in order to
Yes. Mm-hmm.
keep light from going out to the, you know, off the property. And it would be, it would be crude, but it would, it would work.
Yeah, but they also have the film that, that gets utilized in instances like this.
Absolutely, absolutely. They could, you could put a film over the, over the front of it. So like, you know, to prevent the.
Some of your, some of your plenty lumens coming off the front, it's less.
Wouldn't, wouldn't come out horizontally.
And we're just going in and out.
Mm-hmm.
Works out.
The films, I'm, I'm not, I'm just not sure about the longevity of those films, that's all.
Uh, okay.
It's, it's an option.
Okay. Do they last as long as the bulbs? I mean, something has to be changed anyway, or?
Uh, are those, are those bulbs or are they?
No, they, these are L E D fixtures with the L E Ds in them, so.
I mean, they're probably built to last ten thousand.
And, and you guys, but my L E Ds burn out all the time.
They build to last ten thousand hours, I believe.
But the, these type of fixtures, when the L E Ds are done,
You replace the fixture, replace the fixture.
Replace the entire fixture.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a bulb or an L E D replacement. It's, you replace the fixture, so.
So hopefully they're like ten year fixtures.
At least, right? I would hope so.
Well, what's your pleasure? And it, it's, it seems to me that we should, um, I would be in favor of trying to accommodate, uh, with various conditions, uh, when we've got here. And, uh, making it work and getting them to, uh, move on. So whether it's a, uh, you know, a condition that whenever you do change your bulb, when you wore the fixture, it goes down to a twenty seven hundred Kelvin, that's fine. Uh, to the extent that there are aftermarket, uh, uh, alternatives and film alternatives, uh, we would just ask that you consider whichever one makes more sense to you, but do one of those and try to mitigate, uh, whatever spillage is, with the understanding that it may not be complete. And, uh, I think also the understanding that we don't want you to put some sort of welded thing up there that looks terribly ugly when you're building this new white firehouse, uh, or causes a fire. So, um, you know, what are, again, leaving some flexibility to the applicant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think still if we could, if there's a way to, even if after the pole lights are in, if we can see that, wow, it's bright enough out here. We don't need all five lights.
Correct.
You know, we look at maybe turning a light off, you know, or whatever, so.
Well, is, is there Greg or Jeff? Is there a way of measuring, or Jeff, um, uh, measuring the?
Yeah, or, 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 uh, you can go get yourself a blind meter and roll tape. Pretty good, pretty good.
So we'll know what the lumens are and then we would, uh, uh, perhaps live it to the aggregate lumens, just to see proxy that.
Yeah, I mean, for all, for, for, sometimes you have those things and
Sometimes you have the same.
The, the, um, model that says what the lumens are gonna be is not, you know, like, or foot candles is not correct. And you need more lights. I mean, it's all, it's all put into a model. Um, so I'm, I'm in favor of, of what Greg's proposing. Uh, I don't know, it's a post, installation, post completion, just study lights are
Install, post completion, just study.
going out there with, uh, with light meter.
Right.
Um, I have one other question. Light fixtures C and D, maybe even E, have we already approved those?
Light fixtures C and D. Maybe E. Uh, hold on a minute, we must be just.
Because you highlighted four thousand, three thousand and, I think, three thousand kelvin. And they do have the ability to come in lower calvin for a very common, but if you're the reason why it's changed and, uh, not looking at all the guys.
So which ones were you asking about again?
I'm looking at your plan sheet for J and C, flash drive six nine twenty five, page eighteen A. Where you have the touch sheets and you highlighted what the, what numbers were.
Okay.
So, C, D, and I believe E, here are four thousand, three thousand, and three thousand.
Here are four thousand, three thousand, and three thousand. C is, so C was the fixture previously approved.
Okay.
Um, D is the new fixture over just the three truck bays along King Street. And, and E was not previously approved. That's the hi-hat underneath the, the, um, entries. So, um, I can double check those, uh, um, you know.
If you, I mean, if you go to the next page, you'll see in your touch sheets, you can, you can, it looks like you highlighted three, you know, in the red box on the left, lower left, three thousand, when you, you can get them in twenty seven hundred and it looks like the same thing for E. So, I mean, Greg, I, uh, I know temperature is a big thing. They had ordered them, uh, or if they ordered them, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, but if not, then
Or if they order them, it's fine, but it's not them.
We can get them in twenty seven hundred. That would be more aligned with our requiring others to do, to do.
Correct.
I'm, I'm assuming D wasn't ordered yet because we're just looking at it today.
Yes, none, the, the only ones that have been ordered are the ones that are on the building today.
Which is A.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
So actually, another thing to take into consideration, since we're keeping existing fixtures on the building and you guys added this new one, the proposed new ones that are coming in, let's try to make sure the actual colors of the fixture, you know, so you don't have black, white, gray, all these. Let's try to be consistent. So if everything on the building is, existing is black, don't order white ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure of that.
Yes.
Okay. With all this swapping, that sometimes happens.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think, I think everything is either like a black or bronze color. Which is what's there on the building type.
Okay. Uh, are, any comments from the public on this application? Uh, Jeff, you got, we went through your, all your comments, right? Yep.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, um, not seeing any comments. Is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So it seems to me that what we ought to do is instruct staff to draw up, uh, an appropriate resolution, but again, making the distinction with this particular application, that's for emergency services, a little bit special than what we normally see, uh, that we could possibly see frankly. Um, and that, uh, the fire department and, and chiefs will do their best to replace, um, uh, bulbs and fixtures with twenty seven hundred Kelvin. Um, we, we, I think we should, uh, require that for any changes. And then, um, I think Greg's, um, and, and Jeff's, uh, suggestion that we take a look at, uh, post-construction to see what, uh, what the actual need. And then, um, I think Greg's, um, and, and Jeff's suggestion that we take a look at, uh, post-construction to see what, uh, what the actual needs are, and if there might be an opportunity to either, uh, reduce further the, uh, uh, lumens or replace a fixture. We can take a look at that also, again, giving you the flexibility too, uh, it seems to me that we should give you the flexibility to decide what, what looks best for your safety and also and costs and it's ever. Um, anything else that, uh, we would, we wanna condition, Jeff, anything else that you're that you wanna see in the resolution?
You did all, thank you, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, good.
Okay, so, uh, is there a motion then to adopt, uh, that, uh, instruction for staff to draw up the, um, uh, resolution?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So, um, unless you wanna come, you don't have to be there for the resolution. It's a great billing opportunity, but other than that.
That took so long?
Maybe I'll wanna change your color in the picture.
Exactly, you never can tell what Greg might do when you're not here. I have a new sewage requirement requirement on the lights.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate your time.
You bet. Our next application is Nardozzi, this is, uh, Nardozzi LLC, it's a, uh, T Square Properties, sixty four Bedford Road, four hundred eleven King Street. This is an application for site, uh, development plan approval, uh, for the installation of monument sign, a monument sign and a pylon post sign. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good to speak with you, members of the board. My name is Jeff Warner, I'm a member, uh, manager, member of, uh, Fast Signs in White Plains, and we're here to, uh, discuss the location of the sign, make sure we can, uh, install the, uh, four by four monument sign and the post sign, the other entrance. Um, we had a pre-meeting via Zoom, or online here, and, uh, we were requested to, uh, get some, uh, engineer stamps, uh, from our friends over at J M C, and, uh,
Okay.
Sorry, did not prepare a, uh, a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
We're gonna.
Tough to follow that up.
I can share the plans on the screen.
Great. Super.
So I'm not sure, tell me, um, which plan you want me to go to?
We could go to, I guess, maybe, that can zoom out, I, is that, uh, I guess we could go right to the, um, the engineer drawing, uh, C one hundred at the bottom right. Here we go, uh.
Here's the survey.
See the two four signs? Probably the last page of the whole. That must be it, here we go. Yeah, I mean, um, this is the site, intersection of King and, uh, Bedford Road. Um, the monument sign is gonna sit at the top of the hill on the, I guess, the right around there somewhere. Yeah, right around there, we've drew it on the, uh, on the plan, let's see, but, uh, we understand it would be ten feet back from the, uh, the state property, correct?
I believe so.
Yes, okay, cool.
Yep.
So we, um, we placed a sign, uh, within, within that restriction, and then the same at the other sign as well, uh, on the posting panel. It shouldn't be, there's a, uh, there is a, um, hydrant down at that location, at that entrance, and we're to install it six feet from that, which is the entrance.
Right in the middle of this room.
Yeah, I, I, I believe our client will be taking care of the, um, vegetation in the area.
So, yeah, so, so, you know, just to, just to kind of, um, jump in here.
Yeah.
Um, I guess you're going to be helping us early.
Please, yep, thank you.
Okay, so, um, you know, I went out there and conducted a site visit, the original approval, um, included six freestanding signs on the site. Uh, and that was back in two thousand nine. Uh, there are actually no signs on the property, property now, other than directional signs and no parking signs. The applicant is coming in with these two signs, and we do not have separate regulations for the post signs, it would be considered a monument sign, um, so this is, um, outside of what the code requires, the code limits from, a monument sign to one per site. So given the preceding, um, advertise, you know, signage on the site, there were six of them, um, you, you know, we're now going down to two of them, um, but.
Do you, do you know how big the si- do you know what the square footage of the six signs were approved for?
Um, I'd have to go back and look at the plan, I just looked at the site plan that was approved, I could not find the sign package that was approved, but I'm assuming that they were within the square footage of of the, uh, you know, of the code, um, right now, one of those signs is not within the size requirements.
Of the, of, you know, of, of, um, right now, one of those signs is not within the size requirements.
When we had our pre-meeting, we were, um, I, now, I'm just, just throwing out the numbers here that we, we discussed, it was four, fourteen inches, sorry, fourteen, uh, square feet per side, per, per the size of the building. And not to exceed twenty eight feet, and if it was, you know, if it was less than that, we could split it up into, to, s- different signs. So that's kind of what we, we're kind of.
Fourteen square feet per side of the building?
No, uh, beside, uh, per side of the sign.
So you could do fourteen and fourteen?
Yes, yes.
And then, how, and how many of those signs did you believe you're allowed to have?
One.
Just one, totally?
Yeah, well, just total of the, of the square footage, so we went with much less, um, and I, um.
Okay. Gotcha.
Right, so, so what we also needed is to, an understanding of how you calculated, because there is, how you calculated the size, there are certain, um, directions as far as calculating within the code, um, to size it.
Okay. Um. We just.
So, so, but setting aside, setting aside the, the, the height and whatnot, I think that we, you actually need to include a little bit more detail on the plan. Um, you know, there's bushes, there's a telephone pole, where you wanna propose the sign at the driveway. Um, you, you know, there's, there's things that you'll need to do to the site in addition to the signs, and we really, planning board would wanna know what is your planning, if you're gonna remove the vegetation, if you're replacing the vegetation.
Okay. Yeah, I think the reason why we went with the, uh, the hydrant side was because of the, the telephone electrical poles that are on the, I guess, on the right side of the of the, uh, the entrance, that entrance.
I, I'd, I'd like to ask, uh, the fundamental question of what you're trying to achieve with the second sign. Uh, the first sign is, looks, looks fine, as long as you're not taking out the, uh, the, the plants down here, there's some shrubs down there, and not impacting those, that's fine.
Yeah.
This is not exactly a destination shopping center, uh, it's local, yep, we all know what's there, we all know, you know, who's there. Um, and the location that you're proposing for this other, which is now, you know, uh, perpendicular to the road, not only is there a hydrant and pole, uh, there are a lot of signs there. And one of the things that we have here is, you know, like this over signage on our roads, which is just too much, and you know, this would be half protected by, half covered up by trees on the other side, I don't even know what the point of the sign is. And so, asking for a, a sign that we, which you, you might not even have a right to, we'd have to do something special, the zoning board might have to do something special here, I don't understand why you're doing it, no one, no one's gonna, it's not going to open up a new vista of, uh, business for you.
Understood.
And, and, uh, you know, it's just more cluttered frankly on the road, I mean, really cluttered, down the other one, I think would be, you know, quite handsome and up on, on top of the hill, it's very attractive and nice, and it, you know, gives, uh, the, the merchants some identification, that's nice. But again, it's not going to lead traffic in there, it's not like, uh, we've had other shopping centers where people have to loop around and figure out what's up there and where. Um, and also coming in from other parts, because it's a larger shopping center. Uh, this is, uh, you know, a drugstore, a steakhouse, and pizzeria, and, and, and I, I just don't get it, so, uh, to clutter up our road and to ask for something that's not normally available in code, is, is crazy, it seems to me.
I absolutely agree with you, I, it was more of a request that our client, they, they felt the, the need to have a sign there. We are, we are.
Another thing you can mention to them, the location of it right here, as you're traveling this way on the road, by the time you see that sign, you cannot make that turn.
Mm-hmm.
You just don't have enough time to physically stop, I mean, if, if, this sign just doesn't work with its proximity to the intersection. I don't think you give enough, you know, you're driving, you're driving, oh, I see the sign, but by that point, you're already into the intersection, you cannot make that left turn.
It's also a very busy pedestrian, uh, intersection there, where we have the special, you know, pedestrian signs and blink and all this kind of stuff, so a lot of, lot of action there.
Mm-hmm.
Lot of activity, um, the sign is not, in my opinion, not gonna add anything except clutter. Um, and not going to help the, the client, whereas the other is, again, it's, it's very handsome, it could be, yeah.
Yeah, it sits over here, right? Now, is this, is it illuminated?
No.
No, no illumination at all?
Okay.
Okay. Um.
I thought you would be.
I, well, I mean, we've done it as well, but, um, my, my, also, we, there's another entrance on, around the other.
Around the backside, yeah.
Exactly, so I don't mean.
That's more like the alleyway entrance, I.
Sure, but I mean, I, you know, as far as our client's concerned, they're trying to make sure that they at least label what, where to go in there. Would you not agree?
I think that's the, we have signage for that, I think you have enter and exit signs there.
Okay.
Which is part of the clutter, along with the street signs, you know, for speed, watch out for school and pedestrian crossings, and, um, and then all the signs that people put up in that area, either during the, um, the campaign seasons or, um, special events going on from town. It's like kind of a little quasi informational area, you know, the hill there, so it's, there's a lot of distractions.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, I, I, I mean, I love this, the idea, the first one, I think it's a great idea, and then you've got it well positioned, and it looks terrific, and it's.
It's easy.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're done. We're done.
Now, but the other one is bigger than fourteen square feet.
Uh.
It's four by four, right, so it's sixteen.
Yes, it would be sixteen square feet. Right.
And were you limited to fourteen, or is that just a number you guys came up with?
That was just what was told to us in our pre-meeting, so, but, I'm, forgive me, I'm just trying to go on.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would, I wanna, you know, make sure that we work within your, your, you know.
Sure, sure.
Your, what you like, of course, you know, but, um, um, you know. We are hearing, you know, six signs were approved before, you know, we don't know what the size of that was. We, we, we didn't pull these numbers out of, out of thin air, we, you know, they were, what we looked up on the website, I believe, and just
Right.
we went with what we saw, and we're trying to maximize what we can for our client.
And do we, do we know if those six, you may not know, I'm asking, do you know if those six signs were tenant ID signs, directional signs, a combination of tenant ID sign, I mean?
I don't know, I, I'm hearing for the first time from, from Sabrina.
Because it may not be six signs that are for tenants, it might be six signs total.
Absolutely.
And that could be some of the directional signs in that package, because six retail signs for signs would be a lot.
Understood.
I don't think it was directional.
You think all si- you think all six are retail signage?
I do, at the time when that was approved, yes. I do, at the time when that was approved, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we wanna work with, with whatever.
So these.
I mean, it also, it also most likely have included the signs on the building. The signs on the building.
Ah, okay, that could be where the six retail signs are.
And that makes sense.
And there's four tenants in the building?
Uh, no, there's six.
Five, six, oh. Okay, but that might be, that may be your six signs.
So that could be it.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a whole new, this may be a whole new ask, just for one sign.
Right, we'll find out, I mean, I just, I.
Well, we're gonna have two being proposed.
Right. So, I mean, if, if yours, I will have to, uh, if we're, we're holding on to the monument signs at the, at the very least, um, we wanna make sure that we can we can install it where it's going. If, uh, and if, if, uh, there's any issue, I, I think what the question was when we, before we gave them pre, pre-approval, was to make sure that we were ten feet back from the state line, correct?
Yeah, I, I think you're okay with that, aren't you, Sabrina? That one?
Correct, correct.
And that's, that sign, that sign does not come into your line of sight as you go to make the turn, right?
Exactly. Exactly.
It's, it's a of us, right, yeah.
Correct.
It's parallel, it's also parallel with the roads.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be really right up against the, that, that fence, not up against it, but you know, it's gonna stick.
Right. Cause you can make the right turn and not worry about a blind spot on that side.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, did you have other, other comments, uh, Sabrina?
Um, just to make the planning board aware that, that once the location of the sign is approved by the planning board, as part of the building permit, it will be sent to the architectural review board for review.
Jeff, did you have any comments?
Uh, I mean, the, I think the big one, that might make the point moot about if that sign's needed, so there was, there was no sightline analysis that was provided.
Right.
So, you might not be able to put a sign there at all, we'd have to, I, I don't wanna make a judgment whether it's right or not,
Right.
but when you're coming out, there's a, there's a sightline triangle, you make a right hand, to make a right hand turn, you know, you get a little, see the cars coming up the hill.
Right.
Um, and that, that sign is directly in the middle of the, you know, so.
Yeah.
The, the second sign.
The sign on King.
Right.
So that, that would need to be provided, I think, for, you know, to, to, to make an informed decision on that.
Yeah. So, the, the takeaway is, I think that if you wanted to pursue that second sign further on King, um, a lot more analysis and work, uh, would have to be provided, and still may not be, uh, approvable, whereas the other sign looks to be something that wouldn't get done pretty quick.
Fantastic, we'd love to do that.
Okay.
Um.
Okay. So, I mean, you can take that back to the client, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think there's anyone here from the public speaking on this issue.
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, so, um, I guess we can, what do you think, you have to talk to your client, you, you can't just make a decision for them, so. I guess we'll just keep this open, as soon as you come back to us, uh, tell us what you wanna do, and we'll just, uh, schedule for, continue the public hearing and, um, decide what you wanna do, and either, or, if, if you're going to, uh, pursue the other sign, you're gonna have to, you know, submit the information that Jeff has indicated, and also Sabrina's indicated.
Sightline view, understood, and then?
Yeah, and the other analyses that, uh, that Sabrina's also mentioned, so.
Yeah, I think the planning board would wanna see a replanting plan if you're gonna take out those measures.
Understood, okay. Squeak you done.
All right, great, thank you.
A pleasure, you too.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you continuing the public hearing to a certain date?
Well, um, yeah, I guess we are, uh, what date?
You coming?
Well, if you, if you really want, um, do we have initial sufficient notice to even do it for the next meeting, so that they can be done if they're not going to pursue the second sign?
Um.
We'd love the, the, as soon as possible. I'm, I'll talk, we're gonna talk.
We hear, we hear that frequently.
Yeah, sure.
I would have to ask Sabrina and Jeff if they would have time to review a, further plans.
Well, if there's going to be further plans, then I think you have to go into September.
If there's gonna be, for the fifteenth, if not, it would be in September.
Okay. So, if I come back with a, uh, an email with the response from my client saying one way or the other?
Well, if you're going to abandon the other app, the other sign, and just do the, the one monument sign, um, to the extent we can do it legally with notice, we can try to do it for the next meeting, and have you done, um, and.
I know, it's not about notice, cause you've already noticed the public hearing, it's a continuation, but you have to continue with a specific date, but if you're looking to finish up before, in July,
Okay.
No specific date, but if you're looking to finish up before, in July, and not carry this into September, because you're gonna stick with just the one monument sign,
we do need time to put together a resolution for you.
Fantastic, so if we do decide to do this one sign, when is, what is the date that we need to get you the information, say that, I mean, I, I need to, I talked to my client obviously first, I would need at least twenty four hours to talk to them.
We got four hours, didn't we?
He wrote this very tight check.
Do you think, do you think, do you think it's?
No she's ever come down with him.
Do you think it's reasonable to, to put this on for a resolution on the fifteenth?
Oh, yes, uh, if, if it's July?
Yes, if, if you're not going to pursue the other sign, yes, yes, if you can.
If you're not pursuing the other sign, then we could get it done. If you have to submit anything, uh, further, if you decide to do the two, then it can't go on.
Understood, so we can continue the public hearing till July fifteenth, is that the next meeting?
For the fifteen.
Yes.
And then, uh, if you can get us an email in the next day, tomorrow?
Yeah.
Talk to the client tomorrow.
Or Friday?
I, I.
Or Thursday?
One, one question for.
Some, some are. Tomorrow's Wednesday, it's called, yeah.
One question for clarification.
Yes.
Sabrina mentioned that there were six approved signs, if it turns out that those six approved signs are on the building, does this trigger a variance for this monument sign?
Yes, monument sign.
No, because they're different, they're different types of signs.
Okay, so we could do, okay, okay, so they don't have to, they don't have to zone here.
Okay, cool.
They're about one monument.
One sign does not require variance.
But two would.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Thank you for asking the question, I appreciate that.
Correct.
That's another, but that that would be another problem for you as well, if you have to go apply for variance.
Then I, yeah.
That won't happen by next year.
You definitely need a phone.
No, 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 no. Yeah, understood. But I can get back to you in the next day in regards to our client's decision with regards to the.
But I would ask Mr. Chairman, if you pass a, if you, if you, um. Uh, make a motion for staff to drive, if if the applicant is focusing on one monument sign.
Make a motion for staff to drive.
Then staff shall direct, um, shall shall draft a.
Shall, shall draft a.
Resolution from the fifteenth.
Resolution for your consideration.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so is there such a motion that's kind of real motion, or is it?
I would like to propose the motion, it's a nice conditional motion.
Yes.
I propose that motion, okay?
Second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Alrighty, um, are the folks here for uh CG Homes, I don't see Ralph, on screen.
On screen, yes.
Top box.
Did you speak louder, Lauren?
Try again.
Say again.
Uh-oh. Technical difficulty.
We're not, we're not getting any audio from you.
We've heard from Ralph yet.
She's not speaking.
We're not, uh, hearing him. The next, the next item if we can hear is gonna be CG Homes.
Down very far away.
Yeah.
You have any know?
Yes.
Right. So it's CG Homes LLC, four fifty-six and four sixty-two Armagh Road. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat approval, application for stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control. Entry removal permit for construction of a four lot subdivision. This is an informal hearing continuation on the informed.
Uh, would I be able to share my screen, I have the plans on my computer?
Yes, Sabrina.
Do you see the plans?
Nope, not yet.
Well, Lauren, this is noie, good evening, this is Greg Altral, I'm present as well, how are you guys?
Sorry, I'm trying to get it on the screen, it's.
I use a large hammer.
Didn't this happen in one of the Star Wars?
I can't see, I don't know why it's not pulling it up on the screen.
It's actually behind you.
Yeah, there it is, oh.
Oh, you just had it.
Plant is lurking behind you.
Should I turn the camera off, I'm not sure.
I don't know, it's. She needs to change her view settings. You're you're you're.
Yeah, up, you had it?
She's on a setting where she's showing herself in the shot.
Yeah, you may wanna, the the technical advice we're getting is that you may wanna change your view setting.
Okay.
Do we have it ourselves?
Sabrina does, yes.
We may have it ourselves, Sabrina may be able to put it up there.
Okay, if it's causing a problem, maybe.
Yeah, your screen is frozen right now. You haven't blinked for twenty minutes.
Hey Lauren, I just refreshed it, if you wanna just try sharing your screen again?
Okay.
There's something.
Is that?
That's from Sabrina.
There you go.
Sabrina's sharing it.
Alright, we see this document.
I think the plans are towards the end of the document.
This is just so frustrating for people, it's such a shame. You know, they feel so bad, they're getting embarrassed.
Okay. We'll get there.
Yeah, it just takes, yeah. Especially for the um. It's like a damn. Like this.
I think it should be on like page forty, forty-two of the PDF, yeah. Thank you, Sabrina. Um, so we made some slight changes to the plans since last time we were at the board on May twentieth. Um, the slight changes that we made to the plan were, we requested to widen the common access driveway, that's. Yeah. So we widened the access driveway to twenty-four feet and we also adjusted the grading and the drainage layout since the last time we were at the board. We adjusted the legal turnarounds because they requested that more a. Um, the legal planning that we submitted. We wanted to show that we can have a fire truck turn around and uh destroy it. Um, we also requested to submit her wetland and current application, since we're taking down the shed that was in the buffer. And as of right now, we're working on a landscaping plan. That will include wetland mitigation for the area where we're taking out the sand. Um, this is the changes I've made since last time, we're just adjusting the grading and we were able to reduce the cut on the site. Down to about twelve hundred cubic yards. Um, and we're working on all the other changes that we just received coming from the town. Um, and hoping that tonight. We will be able to request that we would be put on an expanding board agenda so that we can open up a public hearing. Uh, but if the board has any questions about the changes, I'd be happy to answer any question.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Sabrina, I think you have comments? Is Sabrina muted?
I don't know.
I think it's on you.
Feel like I'm at the Newark Airport Control Center.
Well, which crashes, and we'll figure it out.
Well, Dennis, do you wanna go through your comments?
Is there one? That's on there, okay. Sure, thank you, um. So, yeah, so as as summarized, um, they did submit a wetlands private application. Uh, again, the only activity that was going to occur in the buffer was to remove an existing uh shed. Um, the footprint of that shed, um, was not provided, uh, on on the plan exactly as to what the size is, but. My only recommendation is, uh, you know, once the shed is removed, you know, obviously you're gonna have, you know, whatever. Hopefully, you know, bare soil underneath or if, uh, you know, I don't know if there's a foundation there that needs to be removed, but really. I think, you know, this is, uh, again, because you're working in that meadow area, le- less is more in essence was my sort of recommended approach, and I think, you know, frankly, just. You know, applying applying a seed mix, you know, to the appropriate, uh, you know, pounds per per acre in terms of 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 the size. Uh, ratio and then, you know, just a mix of, you know, just simply herbaceous plants, native. And um that probably are gonna accommodate for that location more more sunny, um, to partial shade and rake it in and you're done. I, you know, I'm not really into introducing any more materials into into the uh wetlands buffer. Um, moving on to the uh, to the tree replacement, um, they did provide a a table, uh, with calculations. I kinda went through and just made some, uh, corrections. I I I wasn't quite coming up with their numbers, so I just summarized what I thought those corrections were. And to, uh, you know, get down to the bottom line, um, they had reported that they needed to replace three hundred and thirty-nine trees, I I came up with about three hundred and twenty-nine. So you're you're still in a, you know, number of trees that, you know, need to be replaced following those removals. Um, and as indicated, they are, you know, preparing, uh, a plan, um, that I imagine is gonna have to. Uh, accomplish both replanting and to a degree a contribution, obviously, to the true, to the tree bank fund. Um, but again, in in consideration of that, you know, meadow community and sort of where it sits and its development and that it still functions is that. I would recommend to the board that, you know, that they don't include, uh, tree replacement planting within that hundred and fifty foot buffer. Cause in essence, if you're putting trees in to the meadow community, you know, in and of itself, you're gonna be changing that type of community. And, you know, because of where it's located and, you know, sort of how it developed and and really, as I said before, the rarity of that. That I've seen during my my time in Newcastle, it's it's not necessarily an improvement or a functional uplift to the to the system. Uh, which I know is probably counterintuitive to a lot of other applications that you see where it is beneficial to. You know, yeah, let's get in more trees, let's plant more trees here, I don't think it quite necessarily, you know, constant mustard as they say, so. And that basically is it for my uh, for my comments on this application.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Sabrina, would you wanna make your comments? We couldn't hear you before.
Yeah, I think it had to do with thunderstorm that we're currently under. Um, the only, the only remaining question that I had is regarding, um, the maintenance of the common driveway and the stormwater basin. And I think that the applicant should establish a homeowners association. Um, and provide the, um, draft legal documents for that for town council to review.
Okay.
That is the end of my comments.
Great, thank you, Sabrina. Bob, you had some comments?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I have my memo here, a lot of items, um, many are. I don't know, I'm administrative, that are still incomplete, technical items, sections, details, drafting revisions. Uh, however, um, I have four points I'd like to go over real quick. Which are things I think should be substantially complete, if not a hundred percent complete. Um, before I recommend these to be completed prior to going to a public hearing. Uh, number one would be the stormwater plans and the stormwater report. Um, there's still some outstanding items in there that should be substantially complete, if not a hundred percent complete. Um, second item would be the preliminary subdivision plat. Um, to date, uh, a subdivision plat has not been submitted, the plat has to be done by a New York State licensed professional land surveyor. Uh, the P E's are great, but they're not licensed to do that, so. That plat will serve to full purpose, it's going to incorporate all of the several easements that are required, you're gonna need a slight amount of easement. Along once, uh, twenty-eight, you're gonna need stormwater easements, you're gonna need drainage units, conservation easement as well. All those in that map will provide the basis of all the meets and bounds for all the documents that have to be submitted to town council to review with stormwater. Inspection maintenance agreement is gonna be critical, because that's gonna be reviewed by the town engineer. To make certain, in conjunction with town council, to make sure that's gonna meet all the new M S R. Um, qualifications and qualifications that are needed, uh, coming down the pipe from D E C. Uh, so that's critical. Um, number three, uh, would be cost estimate, they submitted a cost estimate, however, it's missing. Uh, the tree replacement costs, the wetlands mitigation, any of the landscaping that the board require. Uh, that's critical, but I don't believe, I defer to Dennis on this, I don't believe to date we received any sort of landscaping plan, a landscaping plan of this magnitude. Uh, I would highly recommend be prepared by a registered licensed landscape architect. Um, who's gonna come up with the numbers, who have to submit that to Dennis, he's gotta look at all these numbers. The plans that's done by the R L A has to be submitted to the board for review. Uh, today, I believe we have not received that at all. Uh, last but not least is comprehensive construction sequencing plan. Which is an outline to the board, and I'm sure the general public's gonna wanna see as well, on how this project will be constructed. Uh, starting with the erosion control, lot by lot, with the stormwater infrastructure as well, with all the drainage. With the access road clearing of vegetation, all the plantings, so they have to really provide a narrative. And spacing sequence as well, uh, that shows each individual phase, um, so. I'm sure the general public might comment on it, I'm sure the planning board wants to see that, how that will be established, I would recommend to the board. That these four items I just mentioned should be substantially complete and will be kept by the board, uh, before a public hearing is set. And those, and that's my comments for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Comments from board members? Jeff, did we, did we ask you for comments?
Uh, Bob was Bobby above her.
Sorry. Any comments from board members?
No.
Questions?
No.
Uh, I I had some questions with regard to the steep slope application and and the location of the pools. It seems to me, I'm not quite sure of where, but lots two or three, uh, might have pools, uh, proposed in extreme slopes. And it seems to me that we we really need to get some slope analysis, uh, in terms of, uh, what's being impacted and where. Um, this application is proceeded, uh, on the basis that, uh, the four pools are just part of the house and it'll just automatically be done, but we do have a steep slope application. And we are charged for looking at that and, you know, getting some sort of analysis, so if you can supply us with a lot by lot analysis of the steep slopes. Uh, vis a vis the, uh, pools, uh, and what's going to happen, what the delta is going to be in terms of your cut. And, uh, exclamation, uh, with these pools, uh, so we have that information. I I don't think that's something that we should leave for final, I think we should take a look at it at preliminary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Did the twelve hundred yards of material not include the pool work?
I believe it does include the pools.
Okay, thanks.
Well, that was a uh delta, that was a change uh since last time, a reduction of twelve hundred cubic yards.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Yeah.
Like uh the the number of cubic yards that are involved in this uh project are fairly substantial.
Right, but it does include the pools, yeah. So we're not gonna get later on, oh, another ten thousand.
Exactly, yeah, hope yes, hopefully not, exactly. Okay, um so what we'll do is uh we'll continue the informal and with this information that we've asked uh uh asked or you've sent to us, we'll uh continue the informal and go from there. And again, any questions that you or Ralph might have, obviously, staff's available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about the technical difficulties today.
Oh, it happens. Unfortunately, it happens a lot, but it happens. All right, great, have a have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to uh the next item. This is a referral from the zoning board of appeals. This is for the Whipporwill Club, one hundred and fifty Whipporwill Road. This is an amendment to the special use permit. So um as a member of the club, I have to refuse myself in terms of dealing with the conversation, the impact, et cetera. I don't believe that we have anything tonight that really is decision making. I'll sit here sort of like, so we don't have accusation that there's no quorum physically here, cause I think we need three. But it's a discussion item anyway, council said that my presence is not that necessary anyway. Well, I think that was a general statement.
Thank you. Yeah, for the record, my name is James Ryan, um formerly with J M C. We're not represented by J M C, but I'm a a board member at the club and representing this application. With me tonight is Anthony Nestor with J M C, responsible for the planning and the engineering, as well as Brian Schmidt, who is our club uh general manager. Uh he's here for these proceedings as well. Um absent tonight, Aqua Tektonics, I only point them out, they're our consultant, they designed the pool. They actually were engaged initially in two thousand and twenty-three. We had an issue at the pool, um which put us in a situation where we had to remedy a number of situations at the pool. Uh the pool is sixty years old, and I think what was um most important is that um when we had the review with the health department, they pointed out a number of issues, um some of which I think we were uh aware of, but most of which, in order to keep the pool open for the season, which we were hoping to do, we had to remedy a number of those too. Uh some of them had to do with um with some of the the grades that were out there, the drainage, uh some of the signage and so on too. So we worked very closely with the health department to remedy those situations. Um unfortunately, one of those had to do with drainage and uh there was an improvement that was made uh without um consent of the of this town too. And it had to do with some additional paving that had to go on too. Uh that work was uh by and large uh measured to address a a drainage issue. They had some collapsed pipes, uh creating some drainage issues that the health department wanted to down.
What type of drainage?
What's that?
What type of drainage, stormwater?
Uh stormwater drainage, stormwater drainage too. We had some coming down, cascading over the hills. It was creating these um, uh I think slick spots in the paving. The paving was was heaving to a certain degree, um so some of that all had to be corrected. So we worked very closely since two thousand and twenty-three with the health department. Um we engaged the services of Aqua Tektonics, um a pretty prominent firm that's done a lot of pools in Westchester County, outside of Westchester County, to advise us in looking at the pool uh from a from a larger perspective. Um realizing sixty-year-old pool, um had a lot of, I think, uh issues that um if we were to make small changes to the pool, we would have to come in full compliance to health department code. I think the determination was made by the club that um we really needed a new pool essentially to. Uh that would correct essentially all the issues. So since twenty-three, we've been working with the health department to correct these issues. Um and then I think in large part, the decision was made to basically replace the pool. There are areas around the pool that are being retained. Um but again, the health department has been actively involved from the very beginning since two thousand and twenty-three. Right now, we're at um probably the end of the review with health department. Um we had gone through and our architectural consultant and pool consultant has gone through uh just a multitude of issues. Essentially, what we're doing is replacing the whole interior of the pool. The gutter system had to be replaced, uh the mechanicals all had to be brought up to, I think, a current standard and health safety related to that. Physically, the only significant change in the pool is that we had a waiting pool that was approved by um this this community in two thousand and fifteen. Uh that waiting pool, which Anthony is pointing out, that location, that waiting pool right there too, um was somewhat problematic because it had some access issues too. It was not a zero entry. Uh health department had advised us that it would be per- preferable, and in cases of most pools that are being built or rebuilt these days, to look at a zero entry pool for for this pool. Um so it was decided that we would demo that pool and add this section of the pool that Anthony is pointing out. So it essentially, the shape of the pool is essentially the same with the exception of this area to the north side, which is the zero entry now. So essentially, we're going from two pool, two pools to a single pool. The requirements for this, obviously, uh going through the zoning board of appeals, because it's amended special permit, and that's essentially why we're here uh looking for a recommendation and a referral uh from your from your board on this. I'll point out a a couple of things too, but um just just to address, and I think Anthony had planned to, to address the legalization issue. We worked with Mr. DePaul uh on that particular aspect of it too. Uh it included um, you know, the details of of how much of additional area was on there. Um essentially though, what what it also did is it it gave us a chance to to put something in place. And again, this is prior to um um this current application to deal with some of the storm drainage. Uh sixty years ago, there was no requirement to do any kind of uh holding or detention uh for this area too. So that drainage had to go to a certain location. So we worked with the health department on the drainage, the collapse portion of the drainage, um essentially put in that new terrace area. And uh what it did is uh we were able to work with the health department to redirect that drainage into uh what essentially it was a rain garden uh area too. So uh previously, it just spilled out essentially out to Whipporwill Road. So so the corrective measures that we made to keep the pool open for essentially these two seasons uh included that that area of work as well. Um so this pool years ago was subject to a number of variances uh as well too. Um so there are variances for the front yard, um for the pool and at at a certain point for the, um I'll call it the kiddie pool, the waiting pool. Uh the equipment location, um there's a building, you'll see a building down here, and that's that's actually gonna be the location for the new pool equipment. It's actually slightly smaller because of the type of fluorination system that we're doing. Um so we're essentially having to rebuild that building. If you've seen that building, the building's essentially falling apart.
Is that the noise-making equipment?
Um that probably is the noise-making equipment for the most part of the pool. I think that the new equipment we're getting is uh is is all brand new too, so I think it's gonna be a lot less than usual.
It'll all be housed in there.
Uh all be housed where essentially in the same location it was housed before. Um but building will be entirely new, essentially. Um so we are um in the process of, uh as I said, of dealing with all the health safety issues. Uh a couple of things to to point out too, that uh when we're doing this this work too, there are some impacts to some of the local landscape. And I know your environmental coordinator has uh pointed out some number of things too, one of which I'd like to to cover, um and if possible to uh consider, this board consider in their uh whatever recommendation might make to the zoning board of appeals. Um we, I think it was uh earlier this year, um we had made a previous application for some uh trees to come down. I think, Dennis, I think there were six trees that came down uh as part of um what we needed to do. And again, it was another health department issue to upgrade our septic system. We had a failing septic system too, and where those trees were in, I believe your requirements say you can only have one application per year. Um there are some trees that are affected by um the improvements we're making. This mostly has to do with um when we tear down the existing maintenance building, there are some trees that are affected in the backside there. And there are also some trees affected by when we extend the existing pool to put in the the zero entry too. There are some trees in that area that are affected by that too. Um I think um Mr. Corelli had suggested that if the board were inclined to to um and and again, it would have to be a recommendation from your board to uh ask the zoning board of appeals to consider a waiver on that too. Both of these instances are tried to try and, what we're trying to do is essentially address a number of health safety and health department-related issues for this pool.
Do you know when the other permit was opened?
Uh it was opened in, we made the application December last year.
It was issued in January.
Dennis, and then January the permit.
He's still got like six more months on the old.
Yeah, we did, we do. Um what we are hoping to do is, well, uh let me start by saying, so so the health department, during these two years that we've kept the pool open, we've filed our applications during that time for the for the new pool. Health department has been very considerate of the fact that they're allowing us to keep this pool open for last season and then for one more season. At the end of the season, basically, until we have a new pool that fully complies with all of the requirements, all, everything that we've been working on, um we we basically have to shut down the pool. So at the end of the season, we shut down the pool. Hopefully, construction starts fairly soon after that, and then we can open it for the following season with the new pool, fully compliant, fully uh equipped with all the current health and safety requirements that they mandate on that too, so.
So like ideally, you close in the fall, you open up late spring?
Open up late spring.
Labor Day of the world?
That that would be the goal, that would be the goal. But we still have um, you know, your consideration of of your board on recommendations. We have the A R B tomorrow, and then we have to go back to the zoning board of appeals with these recommendations, uh whatever they may be, to to ask them to consider that, so that we can move this forward, so that we don't really essentially miss a season, which is very important to the club, so. Um I think, uh you know, again, you know, we're trying to improve. The crux of it is health and safety, but more importantly, it it needed to be upgraded. It is, it has been a problem uh year after year, and and Brian Schmidt has the um uh has basically taken over dealing with health department on all of the issues. Every year, we file health safety plans with the health department too. Uh they've been very helpful, and they've been extremely helpful in helping us to address all of their issues for these two years. But they're anticipating um that this pool will be under construction, we'll have a whole new pool the following season, so. Um, you know, Anthony, is there anything else that I might have missed?
No, unless you wanted to just talk about stormwater and anything like that.
Yeah. Yeah. So um yeah, on the technical side, we know that uh Sabrina has asked for a bit more information on a calculation, a coverage calculation, which we we have done that, we haven't given that to her, we'll give that to her tomorrow morning. Um we have been working with your engineer too, who's been helping us out on the site on a proper stormwater system too, because we have to discharge our stormwater and our backwash to a location, which again, a sixty-year-old pool never really had to do that. Uh we need to do that now. I know that um Mr. Gaspar has been working with with our staff too. We did some recent perk tests too. We found the location that's on the property. Essentially, uh where this pool is located across the street is all Whipporwill. So everything we're doing is um is is staying in that area. Um the stormwater, the piping, as Anthony shows, all the utilities are all gonna have to be new on this too, so there are a lot of work to do, but again, we're hoping uh when we shut down this year, that we'll be able to fairly soon after that, start the work. Uh we've engaged a a contractor already, um so we've already gone through a bid process with that, with the plans and so on too, so. Um so that that's really where we're at at this point, but uh again, uh we look to your board to uh to uh make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals to allow us to proceed essentially with a new pool um for this too. And again, it's an important part of this club as well, so. Um so I'm here to answer any questions. Again, Anthony can answer any questions on a technical side. Uh operationally, uh our general manager can answer any questions you might have on that as well.
Do I take this over at this point?
Yeah, yes, you would do.
Okay.
You're deputized.
Okay.
You're stuck.
I'm stuck, thank you. Okay, so let's start, um.
You spoke first.
Okay, so um I guess we'll just start with comments from from staff, and then we'll go on comments of the board, and then we'll go from there. So let's start off with Sabrina, you still with us?
I am with you.
Okay, you wanna go on your memo with us?
Sure, and a- as the applicant stated, this is uh, this application is currently before the zoning board of appeals to uh amend their special use permit. Um that process uh involves the zoning board of appeals issuing a special use permit and approving a site plan. They are required to refer to your board for any comments or concerns that you may have. Um I copied the planning word on my first memorandum to the zoning board of appeals, um and I continue that line of thinking with my actual memo to your board. Um under the State Environmental Review Act, this is an unlisted action due to the amount of disturbance that is occurring. Um so the zoning board did um declare themselves to be lead agency, um and will carry forward on that. Um there were changes that the applicant needed to make to the environmental assessment form, and they did make all of those changes. Um and they footnoted, you know, made changes regarding their uh table of land use, there was a footnote that was missing. Um they did add area calculations to one of their plans, as I had requested. Um and um provided a plan that um was missing based on their submission. And then uh Jim had addressed the uh coverage calculations, um that they are preparing but haven't submitted yet. So um, you know, it it is uh, it is not a huge amount of change. I think the devil's in the details when it comes to stormwater, which I'm sure Jeff can speak to and landscaping.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, let's go to stormwater then.
Sure, I mean, uh.
And other comments.
It's, you know, typical, there's some, we had about twenty comments on stormwater. It's it's nothing that I think is going to, you know, there's, I don't think there's anything that you can't deal with. I do believe that they, based on recent tests that they did, the stormwater system is is probably gonna have to be across the street. Um so um there are different lots, I believe, so there may be some work that I see it done with respect to tying the lots together, because you got stormwater from one lot going into a second lot.
Mm-hmm.
In fifty years, if they happen to wanna sell one of them or something like that, so prob- we haven't been provided any information on that, but uh ultimately, the uh, you know, they're gonna have to work through this, these, these uh stormwater questions. But I I don't, I don't anticipate having an issue ultimately.
Got it, okay. Dennis?
Thank you, uh Mr. Non-Country Club Chairman. Um so, uh as Mr. Ryan pointed out, right, the first part of the memo was just, you know, administratively documenting the code as written. Uh, you know, obviously, I did wanna point out, you know, cause the country club obviously is uh of size in terms of acreage and even purpose and need of projects are two, you know, kinda diametrically opposed. You got septic in one and jumping in water in the other. So uh again, other than the calendar, um I I, you know, these are, these are not the same projects. And, you know, and obviously, you could have uh more than one project, especially on a property of this size, so. Um I just kinda did this for, you know, what is really, I guess, my role and due diligence, but, you know, how this could be navigated, you know, so that you can get two permits in a year on the same parcel, uh and albeit a large parcel for two totally different uh projects. That's kinda just why I put that out. And then the rest really uh, you know, is is just for administrative completeness, cause like I said, there was just a couple of questions I had with respect to uh a tree that had an X on it that, you know, didn't necessarily have any details associated with it. Uh and I was just justifying, you know, some of the diameters that were shown um for removal, why they would uh be regulated, because within the regulated landscape buffer, uh diameter drops from eight inches to four inches, is to what would require a permit. Um so with that, the last part of the memo was, you know, just sort of, you know, some of these plans, you know, show the breakdown tables of, you know, going through the calculations of, you know, this is what we're removing, this is what we're required to replace in terms of diameter. And since they, you know, they do have a replanting plan that's fairly robust, I would imagine that this is gonna, you know, work out, not be an issue at the end of the day. I just. not be an issue at the end of the day, I just need to sort of see it so I can check the box that yes, you meet the replacement requirements, and yes, you appear to be uh, providing, you know, would be considered screening or, you know, working with whatever, you know, you may be retaining in terms of a, of a, of a natural buffer, to basically just accommodate the definition of the regulated landscape buffer. That basically summarizes my comments.
Just to point out too, we, we do have it on this plan that shows, we did uh, calculations for Mr. Corelli, uh, but we're submitting that tomorrow too, so we'll have that tomorrow as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there was one last thing, Dennis, that you had mentioned about um, the trees for the, the septic system too. I talked to the, the ground superintendent and within the next two weeks, he's got the trees, some of the trees, he's waiting for all of them to come in so that he can plant those. So in the next two to three weeks, those will be in place too.
Okay, and I would just say, I'm, I'm, I'm not restricting you from doing that, but if, if it's still like you want an irrigation plan of some sort, with, with those trees going in, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
We have irrigation in the arenas.
Sounds good, all right, thank you.
Go to my next steps, John.
Where do you wanna go?
Well, it seems like Jeff is waiting for some information, but nothing that's really holding him up, where I think we can, can continue to go forward.
No, and we're, we're dealing with it with the zoning board as well.
Right, and if it will come in, so I still, I feel we can make a recommendation to the zoning board right now. The issue with the tree permits, do we address that now, or is that get addressed at the next discussion?
Depends on what you wanna, it can be addressed in your recommendation to the zoning board, is how they, how you say that you should, how you, how the board feels they should address that issue.
Okay. Gotcha.
And how they, how you feel they can address the issue, it's a recommendation.
So I can make a recommendation and talk to Jeff and talk to Stuart to get their input on.
Correct.
Fair enough, okay.
Well, you should talk to them and then make the recommendation.
Stuart, would you like to give me some thoughts on the tree permit issue?
Yeah, I mean, it just, I guess, my only comment would be that it seems like uh, there's a couple of, you know, there's certain information that's gonna be submitted tomorrow, and as long as we're satisfied with that, I, I don't know that there's anything that would hold us up.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey? Jeffrey?
Me?
Yes, just any thoughts before we continue to make our recommendations?
No, I mean, I think this is a good application, sunarising and brings up the performance and, for to staff, but um, on the favor.
This is a good application, some regular stuff. Definite scuff, but um, on the favor.
I concur, so I, yes, John.
If I could make one suggestion about the tree planting, and I.
Please do.
And I might be a little, but you said that the initial planting from last year's permit hasn't been undertaken yet.
Yeah, I mean, it's been designed, but they haven't been actually put in the ground yet. We're, we're going through a major renovation of course.
I understand, can we amend that application and add these trees to that?
Of course, you could. I, I would have no issue with that, because they've, they've all gotta go in. Uh, essentially, what, what we're doing with the trees that are being uh, affected, when we move that area back to create that zero entry, there are trees that are essentially in the way of the construction. We may be able to, um, I'm not quite sure that we can do it yet, but we may be able to maybe still get the construction in there, it's just easier on that one side, you see the green trees that he's pointing to too, that's where the trees are coming down. We really don't wanna take down any trees, um, but that, we're replacing those with, with new trees, basically roughly in the same location. It's just that they're so overgrown that they'd be interfering with the construction.
So you just commented you're gonna be planting some trees in July, are those?
Well, no, 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 I'm sorry, tho- those are actually in another location, they're on whole number.
Those are different trees. Okay, got it, got it.
From the January permit.
From the January permit.
The one, the ones in July are from the January permit.
And I, I just put it up on the plan, again, my name's Anthony Nestor from JMC, so the plans from January are back in this area. So, this building right here is the main clubhouse.
So John, are we talking about amending this application to receive those trees?
No, amending that application to include these trees.
To receive the proposed trees, got it.
And then just so for content too, um, those trees are over here, and this is the pool way over here, so those are.
And that won't affect any timing of the planting of the trees?
No.
Right, the trees will still be planted when you want, depending on your wants.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Dennis?
So, my only question would be, is the original application was submitted to me as the environmental coordinator. This is now a board application, so um, I could revise anything, uh, but in the same permit, it would be two approving authorities, that's okay?
Well, I, I have a, I have a suggestion, uh, because before we get back to the zoning board of appeals, we'll get those trees in. So, you know, it, it probably would be a moot point at tha- at that juncture too, so I'll just have our ground superintendent just get them in early, you know, get the plants, get them in early too, and that would be before we are back before the zoning board.
And then that closes the, the department.
That would close that up. Yeah, so we'll just, we're just gonna.
You get a minute, I'm assuming there's some approval review, and then that closes it up.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, yeah.
But I, this board, if you consider this, like the Kittle House, you could recommend the zoning board waive that restriction due to the ambiguity in the law itself and the nature of these two applications.
And I can direct staff to prepare that recommendation for the zoning.
Yeah, it's your recommendation, it's this board's recommendation.
Okay.
And you know, and we can address that with the DVA to the extent that they can, they can act accordingly.
Okay. That would be helpful, thank you, if you could.
If that's it, then do I direct staff first, or do I close the public hearing?
No.
Oh wait.
There's no public.
There's no.
There is no public hearing, okay, so then I'm gonna direct staff to please prepare a recommendation for the planning board to give to the zoning board for the applicant to proceed. They still never.
Could I suggest that that be a um, a memo that can be signed by the acting chairman, so we can get it to the zoning board of appeals for their meeting this month?
Yeah, it makes sense.
That makes sense to me.
So, um, we should work with you, Greg?
You know how to reach me.
Yeah. Much appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you everybody for your time.
You have to do the motion.
Nope, sorry.
Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second? Yeah?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have a good night.
You too as well.
Great, thank you, Greg.
We need a class for this.
Well, you can practice at home tonight. Great, thank you very much. So we have the minutes of uh, June three?
Yes.
Now, we have this one adjustment, um, very appropriately, uh, on page five of five, I guess you gave us that extra uh, page. And what I had recommended was that we insert something that uh, reminded us that we did have that conversation about the trees and the tree uh, application with the Kittle House application. And we made some uh, comments that distinguished that particular application, and the reason why we were uh, basically assuming that it was uh, a continuation of the same application. And again, there, there was some um, information and discussion that, you know, they really needed to move forward with this, the project, they were closing down. It was uh, it would operate as a tremendous financial hardship if uh, if the, the trees were held up for, until October. So we, we went through some of the distinctions and, 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 you know, what we're concerned with is making, as with this application too, just really, really just, you know, changing precedent. So when you want, if you were going to do this, it has to be, it seems to me, for particular reasons, as we did even with the firehouse earlier this evening, distinguish that application from those that we normally see. What Dennis would not wanna see is uh, us or him being subject to people coming in every three months for another application on the same parcel for trees. You know, I wanna clear another eight, I wanna clear another eight, and I'll be back in, you know, two more for another application. That defeats the purpose and the intention, the um, the, the public policy behind the, the regulation. So uh, that's why I think we have to be careful with precedent, that's why I wanted to make sure that we had some sort of uh, distinguishing information, so that, you know, lawyers like Stuart don't ruin us in the future, uh, and cause us problems.
I've been noted.
Anyway, uh, with that amendment, is, is everyone okay with the uh, the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
You're okay, is there a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
Motion?
Second? All in favor, I mean, you're the second.
Who seconded?
I don't know, I was not here last meeting, so.
All second.
Okay, very good, Jeff, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried, is there a motion to close the meeting? Motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we did it.